I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that roll be called please, Renata.
Lou.
Bolesman.
Here.
Disharum.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Here.
Holzhouser.
Here.
Humble.
Here.
Ree.
Here.
Zalyn.
Here.
Okay, would everyone please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to open the meeting to a public hearing on the seventeen eighteen school year budget. So moved, I make a motion to open the hearing on the seventeen eighteen school year budget.
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Brian Zalyn. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lou.
Did you vote aye Cheryl on calling to order the public meeting on budget?
Bolesman.
Aye.
Disharum.
My apologies, yeah.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Thank you Cheryl.
Humble.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zalyn.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. At this time, Mrs. Beverlin will present information regarding seventeen, seven, or I'm sorry, eighteen budget, FY eighteen budget.
Okay, the FY eighteen budget, we are finally after eleven months to the point of approving it so that we can start next week talking about next year's budget. But we, our operating budget for, annual operating budget for this year is fifty point six million dollars. And our equalized assessed value is not a little over nine hundred and sixteen million dollars. Our tax rate is four point five eight percent, which is still the lowest in Peoria County. And our EAV increased this year at five point five nine percent. The edgy, we have surpluses overall. In the ed fund, we have five hundred and thirty-two, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars in surplus. And in all funds combined, including the ed fund surplus, we have just under a million dollars for all of our funds in surplus. Our long-term debt, this is always something we look at because of the growth of the district and the buildings and space and things like that, how much we actually have. So we have sixty-three million dollars outstanding, which is fifty-three percent of allowed. So we are able, if we need to, to go out to get bonds, if we need to add on space, if the sales tax money is not enough to cover anything that we have to do.
Interesting question on that. If we did, does the amount, do the taxes go up to pay for those?
Yes. If we would go out for bonds, they would go up. It would depend. We usually try to spread it, spread it out so that it doesn't impact the tax rate any more than necessary. And we do, over the next couple of years, have some coming off, so we wouldn't necessarily notice it in the tax rate. This is our year-over-year sixth day enrollment, so as of the sixth day this year, we're at forty-four twenty-nine, which is actually ninety-nine students less than last year. I don't know if we were about forty-four or sixty. Okay, so it's going, it's going back up, but. Tax rate by year, so as you can see, we had the jump back in thirteen fourteen. Actually, it was in, yeah, thirteen fourteen, it jumped. And then it jumped again in fourteen fifteen when the high school bond, when the bonds came on for the high school. And then this year, we dropped by two tenths, two hundreds of a point. Year-over-year equalized assessed value, so back in thirteen fourteen, we were at point oh seven percent increase. And as you can see, it's stepping up, it stepped up to five point five nine percent. That's what we're watching very closely to see what happens for the upcoming levy year and then the next couple of levy years. Revenue by fund, as you can see, obviously, the education fund is sixty percent of our, sixty-four percent of our revenue. The second largest fund that we get revenue in is our bonds and interest. So as we pay some of those off, that will help with the tax rate. Revenue by source, we are still eighty-nine percent locally funded. That's real estate taxes, corporate personal property replacement tax, launch sales, registration, all of those registration fees, all of those go into local, local resources. The state is eight percent with the new funding bill. At this point, it will maintain at last year's level. We are actually in tier two for need by district, which is the second from the lowest tier. And so we, if new money is put into the budget, we will receive an equal share of that forty-nine percent that will go to the second tier of school districts. So, but that money has not been figured out yet. The state board is still working on what those numbers will look like. But we are held harmless and hold harmless is there in the bill, assuming the state appropriates the money forever. It doesn't go away in a few years like it had been talked about in the past. And then federal money is Title I, Title II, and special education. Those are specific programs. Expenditures by fund, again, sixty-four percent of our revenue comes in the education fund and sixty-four percent of our expenditures go out of the education fund. So that makes, that makes sense there. The operations and maintenance fund, which is what we use to maintain our buildings, is at nine percent. And then twelve percent again is the bonds and interest. Expenditures by object, we spend about fifty-three percent of our budget in salaries and another twelve percent in benefits. So we're running at about sixty-five percent for salary and benefits across all funds. Capital outlay is about six percent. That includes any money that we're paying out for construction, ongoing construction, those types of things, or health, life, safety, any of that. The fifteen percent is the, are the bond payments. These are the fund balances for FY eighteen. And so it shows that we have thirty-two point nine million dollars coming in for revenue and thirty-two point four million going out for expenditures in the education fund, which is where the surplus comes from. Operations and maintenance has a surplus as well of twenty-eight thousand dollars. We would like to see that increase more as the sales tax money comes in that will help take some pressure off of that fund.
When does that come in again?
It starts coming in October.
Is it like a, is it a one check in October?
We, one, no, we get a payment every month.
Every month?
Yeah, starting in October. Bonds and interest, the surplus is one eighty-two seventy-nine. That is, we bond right is what, right for what we need with bonds and interest and use the interest that we earn on that for paying the fees associated with the bond. Transportation fund, we have two point eight coming in for revenue and two point seven going out in expenditures. The, with a sixty-one thousand dollar surplus and a healthy fund balance in transportation. IMRF, social security, and Medicare, we have a surplus of just over a hundred and thirty thousand. We have a fund balance of about two point six seven. That's something we'll look at. That's probably at this point, high enough to maintain security if EAV or anything would drop. The construction fund, we are after this year, after all of the summer projects, we will finally have the construction fund zeroed out from the high school. There still shows eighty-nine seventy-three cents in there. That's interest. So it can, it can get, be moved or just kept in that account for other smaller projects. Working cash fund, we are not budgeted to use working cash, so it's sitting there if we need it. And we'll have a one point six million dollar ending balance at the end of the year. The torque fund, we have about a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar surplus in the budget this year. That was done intentionally when we moved to the tax levy last year to kind of help build that reserve back up to get to that six-month level. If everything plays as it's supposed to this year, we should be at about seven months at the end, seven to eight months at the end of the year, so we could look at what we need to do with that fund as well. And then fire prevention and safety fund, it shows a deficit. That's because we're using money that's sitting there from previous years, but we'll still have an ending balance of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And this shows the months in reserves, which the board has a six-month goal to have reserves of six months in every fund. So at the end of the year, we will be there with the ed fund, transportation, IMRF, social security. The torque fund, as I said, the only one that we won't be there, the only two is operations and maintenance and fire prevention and safety. Those both should start to see a growth in reserves because of the sales tax money coming through. It'll take pressure off of both of those.
Our aggregate dollar amount in the ed fund is about eighteen million in the reserves?
In the reserves, it's about eighteen million in reserves. We have about nine point seven million right now in cash-on-hand investments.
Ice one, the reserve.
Yeah, the reserve is about eighteen million. Are there any questions?
Just one. So you've got the seven point seven one months of reserve you expect by the end of FY eighteen?
Yes.
And then you have, also, you've got a five hundred, five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar plus surplus for FY eighteen in the ed fund? And that is what you're planning for expenditures, including, include your budget as it stands right now?
Exactly.
With all positions included?
Yes, everything is included. The budget is, that five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, the budget is very, very tight. We budgeted it as close to the actuals from last year as possible. If something unusual would happen or something would come up, there's chance that in the winter, in the spring, that we'll be back asking that we may need to spend some of that surplus money. But the goal, that it's not budgeted for anything at this point in time.
So you don't intend to use reserves or working cash?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Would anyone like to address the board regarding the FY eighteen budget? Okay, I'll ask for a motion then to close the public hearing and ask the record show, I'm sorry, I'll just ask for a motion to close the public hearing. I'll close, make motion to close the public hearing and note that no one addressed, no one addressed the board regarding the FY eighteen budget. Okay. Moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Teresa Holzhouser. Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Bolesman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Humble.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zalyn.
Aye.
Lou.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our September meeting. I want to first start with our safety minute and want to make sure I have volunteers to call nine-one-one, first aid responders, and any volunteers who are certified in CPR. If you could raise your hand, please. Thank you very much. Our exits are off to my right, to my left, and our AED machine is in our main hallway here at the high school. As I said when Mrs. Beverlin was presenting, we're at about four thousand four hundred and sixty students as of today, which is about ninety fewer students than this time exactly last year. Our enrollment projections are set to arrive any day now this week. And I also have meetings set up with our principals to go over building capacities in the next couple of weeks. I anticipate those will be probably very short conversations because I think the answer is that we have very little room. So I anticipate that not a lot will come out of that meeting, other than we need to talk. We're going to be prepared to have a discussion with you regarding our facility needs in the next month or two months, depending on how long those conversations take. I want to thank our community one last time for their commitment to the Hurricane Harvey project, which was led by Dunlap High School and Mr. Adrian. I think, thinking back on that, this is probably the best example I've seen of a community pulling together to help someone here in Dunlap that I'm aware of. So I want to thank the high school and our entire community for everyone that was involved. All of our schools participated in that. Next month, we will have the school calendar for the board's review. Our recent survey had close to twelve hundred responses. I think it's probably one of our most popular surveys, it seems like. So much of the calendar has been developed based upon this input and the teachers and I met a couple of weeks ago. The admin team will work on some final dates, have one more meeting, but we'll be prepared to bring that to the board next month. So thank you for those that took time to fill that out. Also, in the next few weeks, the administration will begin planning for the CSCI climate survey. If you'll recall, we took that last year for our parents, our students, and our staff. And actually, we used that data then to make improvements that develop goals for our schools and for our district. So it's very important that as many people fill that out as possible. But we're just now working on the details of all that, but you'll see a lot more on that in the next month. I want to take a moment and just congratulate Mrs. Bolesman. She recently received the WKTV twenty-five Women in Leadership Award, so I want to thank you for your service to the school board and congratulate you on that.
Very well deserved.
Decorating, sorry.
I want to wish everyone a happy homecoming. It's this week and all of our buildings are having spirit days and it's a fun week for the entire district. We're looking forward to seeing a good turnout at our parade tomorrow, which is at four forty-five. And I'm very excited to have the return of the bonfire as well tomorrow night. So thank you to the high school for doing that. And that concludes our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much.
You.
Now time for public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay. So this will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to the information and discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Okay, administration and teacher compensation reports are available for review by the board for information only. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? I kind of have had a few questions. Are those for this year?
They're the ones from like, they're for the sixteen seventeen.
Okay, I was going to say because some of the names were, are gone.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Information regarding investment requests for proposals is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
I see you have one comment, Karen. Maybe we can have them include excess SIPC insurance that covers portfolio, portfolio value. Just ask our attorney that.
I will ask our attorney. I will. I talked to Kate this afternoon. I don't, I will ask or I'm going to work on some wording to put in there. I think SIPC is limited to five hundred thousand dollars.
I don't think so. I think it's up to portfolio, the excess.
The excess to the, so I can, I'll talk, let me talk to Katie again tomorrow.
And then the E and O, we could probably look at lower on that to maybe two million instead of the five. I think you can come back and forth, but ask her on that.
The, okay.
So there's not additional cost for us.
Okay.
That's all that.
That is. And so is everybody good with releasing that if, once I add the SIPC information and release the RP next week?
And reduce the E and O.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody okay with that? Cheryl? Okay, we'll take that as yes. Thank you, Karen. Okay, information regarding property liability and workers' comp insurance renewals available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
No, but we did talk this week or last week about trying to have this bid out each year. Typically, you don't do that, but just the other board members want to weigh in on that.
How much, how much extra work is it for you to do that?
When we, this year when we did the, just the renewal, it took about an hour to do, just pull the number to do it for the work. Last year, when we did the bid out, it was probably six or seven hours to do it. We, and you just need to know normally because it has to start about April. Typically, we do it about every three years based on unlit certification. With our start of November, they've done all of their other school clients before they did it to us. And so they can know what the market trend is for insurance, so they can do that based on whether or not they think we should go out for insurance or if we can actually go out with it. But we can do whatever the board or things wants to do with that.
I mean, if it's for the benefit of the district, I'm fine with it. I just don't want you to, you know, put in a lot of extra effort and work and time if it's not something that they're recommending and if they're watching the trend and if you don't see a reason to do it beyond every three years. You know, I'd just like to understand, you know, the purpose and it's not going to harm us, is it? I mean, there's, is there any harm to us in holding out for a bid?
There is not, there's not necessarily any harm. The only harm that can come is it holds the insur, it can hold the insurance companies accountable to their pricing. The only harm that can come is if you chase, always chase the lowest price.
Right.
If you switch every other year. There are not that many companies that insure school districts. So it's not something where we can go back and forth every year and maintain the insurance rates. And our, ours was an excellent renewal this year. The, the only reasons that we had any increases were because we're actually, we increased the amount of property that we're insuring as well as we had new staff members added and technology added. So that's where those increases came from. So it actually came out very, very good. I will do whatever, and we can talk about it in November or December too and see what we want to do as far as for next year.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions on that? Okay. Information regarding the revisions to board policies is available for the board's review. The policy revisions are for information and discussion only at this time. The board will be asked to take action on these policy revisions at the October board meeting. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay.
The only, at least I had wondered, I guess, there was no history or no documentation of why we did not adopt six, calling three.
Three thirty. I don't know if anyone knows.
And you know what? When I looked into this, so this is not a national or state mandate, they have, so it's really up to the individual district when I called IASB, they really, one way or another. And when I read it, I thought to myself, we do this on, we need, we give it to you, you give it to the principals, so I don't really know if, we even really need it.
And that's kind of why I just wanted to make sure that, that the board kind of saw it the same way I did. I just didn't want to not bring it because I hadn't had a discussion about it.
So do you recommend we have it or not have it?
Yeah, I, I think it's already practiced.
It is. It's almost like offensive, like, well, we're not, we are biased and we are not fair, so I don't know. It's up to you. It doesn't.
My recommendation would be that we don't have it. I don't think there's a reason to have it because I think it's already practiced, but.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions about the board policies? Okay, the board will be asked to take action at the October meeting to approve the selection of a representative for the delegate assembly at the joint annual conference. If we could discuss that right now. Which members are going?
Karen.
I will be going. I will not be the delegate. You, it's your turn. My turn? Who's, who else going?
You, Karen, Beth, Dawn, Abby, and Cheryl.
And Cheryl, okay. Cheryl should be the delegate.
She did it last.
I believe Cheryl is.
Has everybody done it?
I believe so.
And so everybody's done it except for Abby.
So last year you did it and before I did it.
Master Cheryl did it.
Cheryl, you. Me, Paul.
I haven't.
Brian said you're not going.
No.
I think we draw straws, rock, paper, scissors. When is it again? What morning?
The delegate assembly, that is something you require to miss the other sessions, to do the delegate.
Only a small portion.
Because Friday morning, Saturday morning. There are specific sessions that I want to see. If that, if it means I'm missing them, I will be the delegate.
We'll tell you what, this is only for discussion, so take a look at the schedule.
Let's look at the agenda, the schedule later.
Yeah, we'll.
Okay, okay. Okay, information regarding the overnight robotics trip is available packet for the board's review. Mr. Adrian is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, information regarding possible new Dunlap High School courses is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Bowman is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
I do, not many. Just curious about the, I'm trying to look for it here. I wrote it here somewhere. Well, it's where they fix the computer?
Yes.
I guess my concern, I don't know the warranty that comes with, you know, the Chromebooks and I would hate for us to, someone to do something to a Chromebook and then void the.
Sure, so there's a couple of different things that would be involved with that. One would be, it wouldn't just be fixing devices. It would be helping close help desk tickets as well, student help desk tickets. So that would be a part of that process. And then there are also, if it would void the warranty, obviously, we wouldn't do it. But there are some things like key replacements, some small things that can be done. Also, some of our older devices that maybe don't have warranties would be great devices for them to practice on and learn to fix.
Okay, do you think they're watched over?
Yes, yes.
And the only one of these that is not covered for in the technology budget or that would not have a cost impact is the AP computer science?
Right, that was the one that really had the additional cost. There's the AP training that anytime we add an additional AP course, you have to do the training for that and the teacher attends, I believe it's four days over the summer. And then it would be an additional staffing cost. We had budgeted for two hours of that course, so that was the point three three FTE.
And this is kind of the natural next AP class to add? Is this what, do I like other schools?
This is a newer AP course, and one of the advantages to it that we saw is, number one, it keeps with the times. I mean, it's very current course. It also allows for sophomores to take it. We don't currently have any AP courses that sophomores are able to take.
And do we know what the success rate is for the AP test in this area?
I do not.
She said it was new.
But it's a new, I believe last year was the very first year of it, so I could, but I'm not certain how many districts adopted it.
So do we currently teach anything, middle school, elementary school, that is necessary for them to have to take this class?
There's no prerequisite, but I think, I think the STEM at the middle school level would be very advantageous for them to have some of that background in coding.
Are they looking at the curriculum of this class so they might be able to?
If we look at adopting it, definitely, yes.
And then one more question regarding the dedicate, I guess, do you call the dedicate?
Yes.
The only concern I have there is student privacy. If there's sensitive subjects, topics, issues, I, you know, would hate to have our students here see.
Right, some of those different things. I think we could, we have lots of student teachers, student observers that come into the classrooms currently. Obviously, they have to know that there's privacy. I think that's up to the teachers then to be able to make sure they're using discretion, especially among those students. But that would definitely be a conversation we could have with everyone. It's a good point to discuss. Yep.
And the pass fail, that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect a grade point average, right?
It does not, no.
Excuse me, you say you have several student teachers in the building? What, what colleges do we?
Bradley, I asked you, I'm trying to think who else we currently have.
You don't have agreement with ICC at all, do you?
We do have ICC students come in and generally get some of their early field experience hours. But they don't do student teaching at ICC because they generally then go on. I think, I would have to pull the list of how many we have currently, but they're spread out throughout the buildings.
I have a more general question. What's the methodology or process you use to determine what classes?
Absolutely. So the department chairs speak with their departments about different courses that they're interested in recommending for their department. They have an application process that they submit to me online. And then once that's been submitted and I've reviewed it, then I go out and meet with each of them. And Mr. Adrian, we sit down, we talk through what the benefits of the course are, why we think it would be advantageous for our students, and then make a determination about what we're going to actually bring to the board. In this case, this year, when I first received them, I thought, oh my goodness, this is a lot of applications. I don't know if we really want to bring all of these course recommendations. But in sitting with the department heads and talking through their rationale for why they wanted these courses, they all had very excellent reasons as to how they would benefit our students. And for the most part, they were very cost-effective. So felt it was our obligation to bring them here to the board and see what, how you guys felt about them.
Oh, one more question. Debate has come up again and again for a number, for a couple of years, actually. So is there any interest or?
If you look at the, actually, the, the social studies course that's recommended, the modern US history, it does have some aspects of debate within it. It's not a separate debate course, but I see that really being intertwined with what they're doing in social studies.
I mean, it is nice to have, but it's not like the real official.
No, it's not.
Are you talking about debate club or debate class?
Class.
Okay.
Club even, but I think a class.
I could take that back and see if there would be, either one. Yeah, and we could see if there would be interest in that. Yeah, club might be. Although that T is, isn't there? Yeah.
I was thinking so.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you very much, Heather. Okay, information regarding the. Okay, information regarding the lacrosse co-op agreement is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Kazlitz is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I had some concerns regarding it. I shared that with Dr. Parker earlier and then Karen, you called me earlier today. So just, um, you know, and this is, uh, when I first heard about the agreement itself, it was the, my initial concern was that it appeared that we were picking a certain school to participate without the others participating. And I guess during the initial conversation, that was a concern that was voiced by Peoria Public Schools as well.
I don't understand.
Just jump in. We've had a co-op agreement with Richwoods for the last six years. So there's nothing new. Go ahead.
I think that's why it started with Richwoods was because.
Because we've been doing it with Richwoods for six years. Early on, lacrosse, Dunlap didn't have enough numbers. In the Park District, with Josh Nelson created down at Peoria Stadium, a community program. And so Richwoods had a number of kids and Dunlap had a number of kids. And then Mr. Nelson was instrumental in pulling those two schools together, Richwoods and Dunlap, to create the program. Now Dunlap has taken it even further with the community. So we'd sound wrecked. There is nothing going on in the Peoria District at all. So part of our program has been to start up with Richwoods. Now the numbers are, we could sustain a program by ourselves. So that's, I think, where we're at. To not just pull the rug out from a couple of the Richwoods kids that are still in the program, but nothing's changed and we're just trying to stay in course with them.
Yeah, in my mind, a lot's changed because we've taken it on as an IHSA sport, which, you know, is no surprise that I abstained from that vote because I felt we didn't have enough information. We didn't know enough. We didn't know what the cost would be to sustain the program, things like that, that there were a lot of unknowns, which is why I abstained from the vote. But my thought is, when you take it to an IHSA level, you, you, that is different than the club. You are taking it to another level. And if you're going to include one Peoria High School, why would we shut out the student athletes from Manuel and Central and not allow them to be a part of this? That was my original question. And I think that was Peoria Public Schools' same concern. Because it's hard for them to justify why they, the students from this particular school are allowed to participate, but the other two schools were excluded from this agreement. And so my question was just, was to ask, you know, what, um, were all the schools going to participate? And I think that was their initial concern too, from what I understand during the conversation, was that, hey, yeah, we would like all of our schools to participate. And so I guess, you know, beyond the perception that we are keeping specific schools, you know, two predominantly African-American schools from participating in this activity that now we are pushing forward as an IHSA sport and fully supporting, um, you know, I think that we need to look at opening that co-op up. And if it's, uh, from what I understand, understood, and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I understood that perhaps it was a numbers thing and we were concerned about the sheer numbers of students that would come out and how would we sustain that. Um, I think, you know, if we're going to fill a roster, you're going to fill a roster. I mean, you could have that same issue with your Richwoods co-op, right? You could have a hundred kids from Richwoods come out and they take the spots of Dunlap kids or, and you have this overcrowded pool that you didn't have to select from. So I don't see that as a purpose for excluding specific schools. You, you open the co-op, whoever comes out, they come out, you know, you select your team and you move forward. But, um, I think there was concern and then I also talked to a parent who felt, and I think the perception is out there, that there's an outside motivation as to why these schools are not included. Now, there can be history and there may be other, I'm just telling you what the perception is and what I heard from a parent that has a student that would like to participate. And so I wanted to bring it forward and make sure that we have, you know, thought through the co-op because the concerns that I'm hearing are not, they don't really stand up. Because the numbers are going to be the numbers. It's not a, it's not a no-cut sport. You're going to fill your roster no matter where the pool is coming from.
The bottom line is Dunlap, from my understanding, does not need any more kids. We can sustain the program. So I think the co-op, we should just get rid of it altogether. So, because we can sustain it, we don't need Richwoods. So I think we should just get rid of it altogether.
I don't think anyone was out to. Yeah, I'm not sure how that happened, uh, that the perception is out there, that we were actually deliberately and purposely trying to exclude schools.
Been going on for six years and nobody's brought it up.
I just think this is how it was done. And so everyone just went forward with what was actually going on without giving thought to other school. Um, and I did see that late email that Lisa that you sent. And I think if there is that much interest in Peoria Public Schools that they are willing to fund or to pay, I think that's great that they feel they have interested students. So I think it's time for them to start their, their own club, absolutely.
We've had interest in Brimfield and other schools, but we've said no because we don't want to give our opportunities to our taxpaying kids. You know, that could potentially go to Brimfield students. And I know it's an issue with Richwoods, but that's what we're kind of allowing. They've been in, they helped us build that program from day one. Like, there's three kids. And I guess if, if the perception's out there, it might be best to just pull that out then entirely if, if we're going to be looked at in, in the fashion that you presented.
Yeah, I agree with Brian. I mean, if we have enough to field our own team, I think Dunlap's made a nice name for itself. I'm, I'm fine going without the.
And I feel bad for those three students.
I know, I know. But if there's that interest out there, they can.
Right. And then, you know, like I say, it's, uh, I, I think, it's like you feel bad for those three students. I would feel bad if there's other students that want to participate and they're in that same district that's supporting those and they don't get the opportunity. So it's kind of an all or none, right? You, you either make a co-op with the district and those students are allowed to come and participate, which, you know, the sheer fact that these kids have not had the opportunity to be exposed and have not been playing at the club level would mean that you're probably not going to get a whole lot of numbers coming forward that are going to, you know, compete for those spots. But to just completely leave it out of the co-op, I just personally had a problem with it. I mean, I could be the only one and you guys can move forward without me. But I think that, you know, you really need to look at that. And if it's, uh, to Brian's point, if you have enough to field your own, perhaps you don't need a co-op. But, uh, you know, to handpick, and you say three kids, what if thirty kids from Richwoods come out?
Then that's fine, but it's not handpicking. This relationship's been going on for six years.
Yeah, but like, but this is new. This is new.
Just because it goes IHSA, why does that change anything?
Because now we opened it up.
The kids play together. Why does each, why does that make a difference?
The fact that you have a contract in front of us that we have to sign, Peoria Public Schools has to sign, and we have to.
Which they've agreed, they've agreed that we're allowed, they've agreed to allow Richwoods in.
And now they would like to agree to allow Central and Manuel in. And if it's that big of an issue that we do not want to include all students, then you just do Dunlap and you don't have.
I think this is a good conversation. And so let's get a feel where everyone is around the table. So I am actually, I heard it from Brian. Um, I, I am actually in favor of going without the co-op based on conversation. Is that what I hear from?
I would prefer to stay with Richwoods just for those kids that have been in the program because it's only a two-year agreement. But if, if, um, I can go either, either pull it or stay with the Richwoods. But I think to open it up, which means why wouldn't we open it up to Brimfield and the other areas? Um, there's a lot of kids out there that would like the opportunity, but I don't like us, our taxpayers are paying for our facilities, our coaches. And to take away opportunities from our taxpaying, which we're elected by our taxpayers, that couldn't, I, I just won't.
Yeah, I just find it interesting that we're talking about taking away when, when I asked about Manuel and Central. We weren't talking about taking away when we had the agreement with Richwoods.
I just said Brimfield.
Well, let me, let me make a comment to that.
Brimfield's a different district. We'd, we'd at least deal with it in one district. There's three high schools in that district. If you're going to have a professional agreement drawn up and a, a true co-op is a cooperative agreement between two districts.
It can be.
You, you need to, you need, you should allow it to be all three schools. I mean, there, there's no argument. What, what would be the harm?
Well, you're absolutely right, Dawn.
What would be the harm?
I want to.
Just explain.
But I, I get what you had. What would be the harm?
We don't need it because we have the numbers. However, we have three students from Richwoods that have been in this program that have created relationships.
And you may end up with just those three students. You may end up with.
But I'm just saying, we, we don't need Richwoods. I'm just saying, I think it's great that we could allow Richwoods to stay in it because of these three students. But ultimately, we don't need it because we have enough numbers.
Right.
But I was just doing, I thought it would be a nice gesture for those kids.
It is. Abby, where do you stand?
Well, I certainly don't want to be perceived as purposely excluding any student from any school. However, I think our interest is to serve Dunlap school students. And, um, you know, it's a shame you just, you know, it's a shame you can't include those three children. However, there are several houses for sale in Dunlap. I would encourage those children to move out to Dunlap School District. Maybe that will get them out here and, and.
So are you saying that?
I'm saying we should just have.
Make it a cliff cut?
Forget the co-op if it's going to cause controversy and go ahead and just have it be a Dunlap sport.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm fine with that too. Teresa?
I guess my question's going to be then, in the beginning, we're, and Brian, you know more than this, uh, about this, I guess. When we were discussing this and I was looking back, and I think it was in July when we took the vote, probably before that, when we were discussing it. We were discussing it and approved it as we were having that co-op with, with, I'm not sure if it said, I'd have to look, Richwoods or, or District 150. I guess my concern, how many do we have today that we can field the team? Whereas two months ago, we were going to include Richwoods or whoever it might be. That's what I'm trying to understand. My biggest concern here, and I understand that we have to, you know, look at our, our kids first, but once again, if there's three kids that have played lacrosse for I don't know how many years on your team, my goodness, where, what are they going to do? And I know, you know, they're not in our district, but still, you know, that's where my, my biggest concern, I mean, the poor kids that, that cannot, maybe they cannot afford homes here in the state. Who knows what their, their situation is.
They played for Notre Dame, right?
Yeah, potentially. But I mean, they've got relations with their kids.
Exactly. And they've played as a team for how many years? I don't know how, I don't, you would know the answer to that question. My concern, but I also understand Dawn as well. You know, you're basically excluding certain kids in certain districts. So I, you know, I can see it both ways. But how many do we have? Do we know those numbers right now for lacrosse in Dunlap?
Yeah, the high school program is about twenty-six. Katie, is that right?
Um, the numbers I have are twenty-eight and that includes four Richwood students.
But you have not had.
But we have not had, we're waiting for a coach to be in place to have like a team meeting so that he can gauge the interest from the students. So these are based off of the Dunlap Lacrosse Club information.
And you need nine players that are on the field.
Of nine.
Plus a goalie.
So you have twice the amount that you need to field a team.
So we have enough.
No, I understand. How many would we field on a team? Fifteen? I don't know.
We play on thirty total, right?
IHSA limits it at thirty. Their roster, yes, you can have up to thirty athletes dressed.
But that's kind of like football where you can have, how many players, how many do we have? Hundred and forty-five, hundred and, what? I don't know. What is it? Anybody know how many football players we have and how many actually play? So, so just because you, just because they limit us to thirty doesn't mean they're all going to get the playing time, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I'm kind of turned.
It's like basketball. You can have twelve or whatever on a team, but generally speaking, you might play with seven players.
Okay, Cheryl, do you have any questions on lacrosse?
You know, it, I had a really hard time hearing you guys. I could hear Brian and I, I just heard Beth and a little bit of Teresa. So I am not fully up to speed on everyone's, um, input and the support for wherever anyone stands with this information only item.
Yes.
And I think we, we got to get our heads together. Um, it's tough not to do it, um, in open session because we can't talk as a group. But I really think we need to, um, you know, dig deep in this. Um, I did hear Brian or somebody say that maybe they could go play for Notre Dame, but we don't know that for a fact. And it sounds like, um, you know, they've been part of this ref team. Um, so that concerns me. Although, of course, we are elected to represent our stakeholders, so that's our number one priority. I get that. Um, I think we got to dig into some of the facts and, um, either table this so that it's not on a vote because there's no rush, right? Because it's a spring sport in February. Maybe we push it back a month and we have a chance to talk either again in open session, you know, in front of the public or, you know, talk one-on-one. Um, but it seems like there's some additional information, uh, that I can't hear. I don't know.
Okay.
So, you know, my, my recommendation, only because I'm, I'm in the meeting remotely, so I'm not hearing, would maybe move it back a month. Um, but that's up to you guys. Um, I would hate for these, you know, kids that have been part of the team.
Hey, Cheryl.
I don't know about the other issues, but, you know, if they've been part of the team, to, you know, throw them under the bus for whatever new information we have. I, I, because I can't hear that very well.
Right, so the other.
My recommendation would be to table.
Well, this is only up for discussion.
It's only an information item, so.
Right, right. It would be up for a vote next month, but then, you know, we wouldn't be able to talk about it. I mean, I don't know if you want to, you know, have a discussion again in open session right before the vote, and that's fine. Or you could table it, have it for an information item next month and then, you know, move forward the following month because, um.
My only concern with.
Move back the time.
Katie. And my only concern with waiting is that if we were to approve it, it still needs to go to Peoria Public Schools. You need to allow them a couple of months as well, um, for their board to review that and approve this. So, um, you know, I think next month's fine, but I certainly wouldn't wait past that to this, to the vote.
I don't think we need to wait till next month. I mean, all the information's here.
If there's not a consensus to bring it back.
We need to do a co-op with Richwoods, we do a co-op with all the schools, or we don't do a co-op at all. I mean, there's three options.
And at some point in time, we're going to have to cut the ties. I mean, this is a Dunlap sport and we can't have the whole community involved in Dunlap. Other districts are going to have to form their own team.
Yeah, so it's a two-year agreement, right? And you can field up to thirty on your roster. So, I mean, if we, if you were concerned about those kids, then wouldn't we, couldn't we just open up the co-op? I mean, what are the, what are the chances? You're still going to not fill more than thirty spots? I just don't see any harm.
Well, I think if you only have thirty.
But Brimfield's not Peoria Public Schools. They're, they're not in the conversation.
Why don't we do a head count on those three choices and just see if we have consensus, okay?
I don't, first of all, I don't think if they knew that there were only two more spots available, I doubt they'd want to spend a thousand dollars per school to invest in our lacrosse team. Because if you can only have three and we already have twenty-eight, it means only two children are going to be able to join.
Well, but not necessarily. It's an open tryout, right? It's compete, it's a compete sport.
Okay, say five of them are able to play better than current anyway. I, I say we just do not have the co-op. I mean, I hate to do it, but we've just got to, I think.
So the choices are no co-op, co-op with Richwoods, and co-op with all of District 150.
I would say co-op with all of District 150 based on the fact that you have those three kids. We have twenty-four that you think are interested. But once you go to tryouts, you never know, know where you could end up. You have thirty spots. So I think you could.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Um, you, we can do JV and varsity as well. The state series is for varsity only. So when I was talking about the thirty roster spots, that is, um, for the team participating in the state series.
And do we have the budget for the coaches for the JV?
Um, we did budget for an assistant coach, yes.
So you could potentially have how many?
Well, I mean, thirty on the varsity and then I, I don't know if you would want to do the same on the JV. I mean, chances are you're not going to get to sixty kids, but the thirty roster spots is for the state series. So that would be for the varsity team participating in the state series.
And, and, and we would be able to use their facilities, right? I mean, this is a give and take. It's a cooperative agreement. We'd be able to use Peoria Public Schools' facilities?
That was, that was discussed, yes.
Okay, and we'd have, and they'd have some income. They'd pay per school, I would assume, right?
They would pay a thousand dollars per school.
Okay, so we get additional money, we use their facilities, and we still cap it at the thirty and possibly some JV spots. I would be in favor of all-inclusive co-op with Peoria Public Schools for the two-year agreement.
Brian?
I'd say no co-op.
I'm no co-op.
I'm no co-op. Teresa?
Well, I could go either way on this.
Okay.
I can understand, but since we have consensus, if we were to include, we would have to include the whole District 150. I would not exclude schools from that. But it looks like we have what we need here.
Okay. Cheryl, do you want to provide input? I know you've had a hard time hearing, so.
Yeah, at this point, and I don't know where everyone stands and we're not at a vote anyway.
Right.
So, um, I, I would like to review where, you know, everyone stands based on what, you know, factual support, um, and, and then weigh in. I, and my concern, my biggest concern, of course, is for our students. But secondly, you know, we've already extended the co-op to begin with with these Richwoods students that are part of the teams, the ref teams. I have great concerns about all of a sudden pulling the rug out from under them, um, without, you know, I, I can't hear how many people are, you know, already on the roster, but, so, you know, it's an information only, so I'd like to weigh in later because, I know you're doing a head count, but it's information only.
That's right.
So I'd like to weigh in, uh, once I get all the information.
Okay, there are four though who are not interested in it, so I don't know that we would, there would be any reason to bring it for a vote. Because there's not consensus to approve it.
Um, I, I don't understand. There, there are four people that are voting or?
Not, not interested, not interested in going forward with the co-op. And the vote is to approve a co-op, so.
Okay, I still, you know, I don't know the Roberts rules, but I think you still got to bring it forward to vote against it. I, I'm not sure. But, um, I think this is information only, so I don't think.
Right, we don't.
Doing a head count can pull it from a vote, but I'm not an expert on that.
Okay, Lisa, we'll do a little bit of research on that and let us know, okay? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll just make a comment here because there's a little sidebar conversation. I'll just make a comment here because there's a little sidebar conversations going on, you know, and thumbs being pointed my way and like, you know, you took the opportunity from those kids. I'm not trying to take anything from anybody's kids. I'm trying to open this up so that all kids, so it's an exclusive co-op. Because as I sit in this board seat, I'm not going to be the one who eliminates certain schools and certain kids from certain sections of this area from participating, right? So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. So, Brian, there's no intention on doing anything to those kids. As a matter of fact, the interesting thing that will come out of this is that we had a full board that was willing to do some form of a co-op, but the minute I mentioned Richwoods and, I mean, Central and Manuel, that all fell down. So, that perception can then carry on beyond this board.
Just on record, that has nothing to do with my decision. Dunlap has, has plenty of kids to do this. We've been doing this with Richwoods for six years. And Richwoods is a, um, fifty-five percent minority school, so, um, we have had that partnership with them. I wanted on record that we wanted to continue that, to keep those kids in the mix. But ultimately, Dunlap has enough numbers, we could have done this from the very beginning by ourselves. So, just on record, I just wanted to know it has nothing to do with the inference that was made next.
I agree with Brian. My sole decision was based on numbers and the obligation that we give to our families and our community.
Yeah, and I agree a hundred percent with that, but the numbers are the numbers. We said thirty, and I, I'll leave it alone, but it wasn't numbers, it wasn't the, the, the cost. Because when you talked to me earlier, you said it was financial, that they were broken, that they were not willing to give the money, and that was not accurate. So, it's not the money, it's not the numbers, and if we were willing to do a co-op, there's absolutely no reason why we couldn't do it with all three schools. The numbers are the same, the cost is the same, we're getting facilities.
We don't, we don't know if the numbers are the same, because we haven't reached out to those schools to actually ask them.
Well, no, but when I said numbers are the same, we're not going to take away the thirty people. The numbers are the same, the team numbers would be the same.
Okay.
The, uh, we would gain money and we would gain the use of facilities by co-opping, which is two things that we both, we need for the program. So, I don't, I don't see a negative in it, I really don't.
And that's okay, everyone's good, let's just move forward.
Let's, let's, let's use one more comment. We had, the only reason we were going to keep Richwoods in the program is they helped us start up and they had three kids that have been in the program. Other than that, we can do it by ourselves. Unfortunately, we do have a great community program and that's just the reality of this district, has done a great job building lacrosse. And, you know, we were going to bring, I think, keep them in the fold because they had some kids that have went on to play D1 out of Richwoods and all those years up, they've now graduated and they have three kids left in that program. Um, so, I, I just want to make that comment. It's not that we're excluding, I don't think we would have kept Richwoods in other than these three kids because we have the numbers and we can sustain it.
Right. Yeah, and I'm concerned too about just the opening it up to a school that's so large, the universe of, you know, us having, you know, potentially more Richwood students than we have, or, or Peoria District 150 students than we have Dunlap students. And I would like our resources to go towards our students, particularly because it's such a growing sport. I think that we'll see more and more, uh, students, uh, from Dunlap coming out for it. And then the other issue I have is that, you know, it, it is work for our staff to, to do the co-op. Um, I'm sure there's a lot of coordination that must go on and I, I don't know if it's worth it, um, in this instance, given that we have the numbers, so...
So, if there's no further discussion on that, let's move to agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you, Katie.
Dr. Parker does have one item for a future agenda item.
Yep, I do. Um, I have something from Mrs. Ree on an in-depth review of the enrichment Eagles program. And so, we're just looking for a consensus to make sure that that would be okay to bring back as a future agenda item sometime before the start of school.
Before the start of schools, okay, so you've got plenty of time.
Yep, I think it would be fine to do a review of that.
Okay, Teresa, you okay on that? Anybody have any questions or objections? Okay.
I also wanted, while we're on future agenda items, I'd put a note there about, um, a lot of those future agenda items were created with either probably previous boards, which a lot of you are members of. But I wanted to see, um, in particular, items three, four, and five, if those are still items that you want the administration to be working on. One of them is for this year and two of them were for next year. Um, just didn't know if we should still be spending our time on those or if priorities had gone a different direction.
Should we not add a few of the vocational items? Can we add anything at all? Co-ops maybe?
Co-op, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we have done some of that?
And I would tell you, that's still something that, you know, Heather and I just talked about it, um, yesterday and today. I would still have an interest of ours, um, to bring back some more vocational, uh, things to the district, so...
Then you can do that when you're ready.
Okay, all right.
And then what about number four? Um, we, we sort of addressed this when we talked about the explore program. So, is everybody okay with taking off number four?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically because the languages that are listed, the Mandarin and Arabic, as far as sustainability goes, we have a hard enough time trying to find Spanish teachers, let alone this. And I would hate to start a program and then have it just fall and then we invested all those resources for nothing.
You said, you said number four?
Number four. Are they no longer teaching the Arabic?
Yeah, I don't think they're teaching Arabic anymore, so that was...
There used to be a night program and this was a long time ago and I don't have all the information on it, uh, but they did that outside of school.
That was Mandarin, right?
Oh, what did I say?
You said Arabic, wasn't it?
Oh, my gosh, it was Mandarin. Yeah, that was prior to becoming to the district, but yes, I can understand, but they had a hard time getting Katie's professors for that as well.
Okay. Dawn, you okay with removing that one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then the number five, boys versus girls achievement?
I would still like to see that at some point.
Well, is that something that can be held within like your S.I.P. day or, you know, when teachers get together? I mean, you're always doing educational things, right? Um, how certain students need, you know, certain things and, you know, just even just culturally, there's all kinds of differences.
So, tied in head, I mean, there are a lot of things that we're focusing on this year as far as initiatives and, um, I guess, things that we're exploring, whether we're creating practices, whether we're taking a look at, um, our scheduling, adding, um, textbooks, our science, middle schools, maybe up for renewal, I mean, there is just, there's a lot going on currently, which is why I don't know how that would fit into what we're doing this year.
And that was actually eighteen nineteen, would that be something that you'd leave at eighteen nineteen?
But nationwide, there's, there's a concern with boys and the law. I just want to know where we are within our district of that gap with, uh, boys and girls and...
That's definitely a sample of administrators working on their doctoral exams.
You know...
That would be a great topic.
If anybody's interested.
That's actually an interesting point. So, with our STEM, how many girls versus boys are interested? Because it's still a math and science person.
And there is a lot of, there is research out there on that. It's just deciding exactly specifically what, or we shouldn't hold one on it because it is just a broad...
Oh, I mean, if there's such a gap where boys are underperforming and we just try to figure out, wha, how do we get our boys to get on?
Sure, and it's a great place.
And I don't even know if we have that issue, but I've read nationally that there is some concern with...
And a great first place we could start in that, is to take a look at our specific data and compare the boys to the girls.
And is that what you see in elementary school and that would be maybe the place that a lot of stuff works in?
Yeah, we can tie it to what we're doing with data, that's related to our district, that's, bring it over.
Okay. Any other comments on future agenda items? Okay, this concludes the information discussing items segment of the meeting and the board will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding consent agenda items? Okay, if there are no clarifications or discussion items, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the September twenty, twenty seventeen Board of Education meeting.
Second. Uh, it's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by...
Dawn.
Dawn Bozeman, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there a discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Dishon?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zaln?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bowles?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carried. Uh, we will now move on to the action items segment of the meeting. The bill list and treasuries report are included in the board's packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions, are there any questions? Okay, I'd ask for a motion to approve payment of bills.
I move to approve payment of the bill in the amount of four million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents as presented.
I'll second that. It's been moved by Brian Zaln, seconded by Abby Humbles, is there a discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zaln?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Dishon?
Aye. Okay, the motion carried. The district investment report is available in the packet for review. Mr. Nguyen is available to answer any questions, are there any questions? Okay. Um, there's information regarding the FY eighteen budget included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? About the budget? Okay. I'd just like to make a comment before we vote. I, um, had voted no on a couple of items, uh, the, uh, the addition of a number of new staff people and also the one-to-one. But I'm going to support the budget because, you know, practically speaking, it's not a time when we can not hire those people, so... But I do have concerns with some of the budget priorities, but I'm, I'm going to vote yes, so...
But you're happy with the surplus?
I'm very happy with the surplus, right. So, uh, I will be voting yes, we just wanted to explain that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the twenty seventeen eighteen budget as presented? I move to adopt the twenty seventeen eighteen budget as presented.
I second.
It's been moved by Abby Humbles, uh, seconded by Teresa Holshauser, is there a discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zaln?
Aye.
Blue?
Blue? Cheryl?
Aye.
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Dishon?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Motion carried. There's information regarding the district office lease renewal. It's included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions, are there any questions?
I think I'd suggest we table it because I think we're waiting to hear back a couple of items, right Karen?
I am trying to see if I can get the increase that I've not gotten. I've not gotten a positive vibe on that yet, but I will go with the one.
Okay, so we'll table it and still get the... We'll move to approve minus.
Is it, a move to table?
No, it's...
It's the deadline.
We have time.
We have time, but now it's deadline.
Okay.
And the lease is required, three and a half percent increase, which I think is pretty tight.
Yeah. Is there a motion regarding the lease?
So, are we, are we going to table it?
Um, I'm asking for the motion, I don't have one yet, so... Motion to table it, you mean?
Table.
I motion to table the lease.
Okay.